Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 2020, November 4th, 2020, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Hope everyone is doing well tonight in your, your different sections of the grid. First up is the approval of our minutes from October 21st, 2020. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of October 21st, 2020 is written to the record.
Second.
All right, it's moved in seconded. Commissioner Westall.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
I.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
Commissioner Winborn.
I.
And I'll vote I as well. That passes unanimously. That takes us to our consent agenda and we have one item tonight for AFP dash eight six four five dash 2020, construction of a 168 square foot screened porch and 224 square foot open deck at 13 Trudy Way in the R90C medium density residential cluster zone. This is an amendment to final site plan. And again, it's a consent item. Are there any questions for staff on the consent agenda?
Yep.
All right, okay. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented in the record.
Second.
All right, it's moved in second and Commissioner Wesel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
I.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye, aye, aye.
And I will vote I as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. We're going to move on to our site plan agenda, but before we read the first one into the record and to get folks who are interested in testifying on one of the two applications, I'm going to ask Brian from the tech team to run the video about how to make remarks and testify virtually.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, and for anybody watching, if there's any issues or any confusion, we'll take our time when we get to that section and make sure you have ample opportunity to let us know if you have something that you'd like to add to the discussion. First up on the site plan agenda is AFP dash eight five zero eight five zero seven dash 2020 Crown Neighborhood Three. Convert 23 previously approved single family detached lots to 34 24 foot townhouse lots in the MXD mixed use development zone. This is an amendment to final site plan and presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. Can I please have the presentation up, please? Thank you. So, good evening. Staffs, for you to present amendment to final site plan application AFP dash eight five zero seven dash 2020. This application is based on schematic development plan application ASDP dash eight three seven nine dash 2019, which was approved by the planning commission on April 15th of 2020. Next page, please. As shown on the screen, Crown Neighborhood Three is located south of Fields Road and east of Cogly Drive. The primary points of access into Neighborhood Three will be from Fields Road and the Post Salinger Drive and Morrison Drive. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section 24 dash 172A requires the planning commission to grant amendments to approve final site plans. The applicants requesting to convert 23 single family home lots to 34 24 foot townhouse lots. Do want to note that staff did receive one outside correspondence that is part of the record and we had sent the commission an email yesterday of that due exhibit that was included to the record. And I will have the applicant David Ramsey from Westbrook Properties is going to do the presentation this evening.
All right, thanks Jasmine. Good evening, Mr. Ramsey. How are you?
Good. Good evening, Commissioners. As Jasmine mentioned, I'm David Ramsey, representing the applicant, Seven Crown Farm Owner LLC. And we are here tonight to present a site point amendment for Crown Neighborhood Three Phase Two. Next slide, please. One more. There we go. So this first slide shows the overall Crown development. Neighborhood One or Downtown Crown is located to the west. Neighborhood Two is centrally located within the property and the site plan amendment we're proposing tonight is located within Neighborhood Three to the east. Next slide, please. Our plan amendment is focused on the conversion of 23 single family detached homes into 34 single family attached townhomes consistent with the SDP amendment approved earlier this year in April. Excuse me. This slide, this slide shows a comparison of the existing site plan against our proposed amendment. The existing single family homes are highlighted in blue to the left and the new layout with the single family attached townhomes are shown in yellow on the plan to the right. Next slide, please. The layout and locations of these converted lots are identical to those shown on our previously approved SDP amendment. At the historical absorption rates experienced within Crown, this conversion will accelerate the build out and stabilization of the community by approximately three years by accelerating construction, final paving, bond release and turnover. It will also increase affordability by providing housing options to a higher percentage of the city's households while simultaneously increasing the availability of three and four bedroom units. While the number of units within Neighborhood Three does slightly increase with this change, the total number of units covered under our Neighborhood Three and Five SDP will be under the allowable total. When the SDP was originally approved in 2017, it contemplated a total of 445 multifamily units within Neighborhood Five. Based on that unit count, a total of 26 MPDU's were designated within Neighborhood Three. However, when the subsequent site plan for Neighborhood Five was approved earlier this year, it reflected a reduced total of 386 units representing a 59 unit reduction in the, against the approved SDP. While this reduction in multifamily units would dictate a reduction from 26 to 25 MPDU's within Neighborhood Three, our SDP amendment and subsequently this site plan amendment holds the total number of MPDU's at 26 and further into the city's goals to increase affordable housing opportunities. Next slide, please. This amendment will result in an expansion of green and usable open space by increasing the park area located in block AA shown here. We're expanding the park area to the east, adding approximately 9,800 square feet of additional usable open space. The added space has been designed as an extension of the existing park area complemented by perimeter sidewalk, landscaping, benches, trashcans and lighting, further activating the space. This change also eliminates the rear facing units adjacent to the park. You may recall from our prior plan, we had a less than desirable condition with the rears of the single family detached homes fronting this park space. As a result of our proposed changes, we now have the fronts of the townhomes facing a larger open space, which is undeniably a much more favorable design. Next slide, please. There will be no material changes to the existing infrastructure or architecture. Vehicular and pedestrian connectivity remains consistent with our approved site plan and SDP. The new townhomes will be harmonious with the currently approved 24 foot townhomes and serve as a, serve as a continuation of Craftmark Homes existing program. In the image to the left, the homes in green reflect the locations of the currently approved 24 foot townhomes. The homes in yellow reflect conversions, reflect the conversions and as you can see, they'll blend in nicely. Craftmark will be utilizing the same currently approved architecture to avoid any disruptions or in design or community theme. Next slide, please. On this last slide, I wanted to take the opportunity to respond to some feedback we received during our presentation for the SDP amendment associated with these plan changes. If you recall, we discussed the importance of the Morrison Drive streetscape. Morrison Drive is the road along our eastern boundary line, running between Fields Road to the north and Crown Park Avenue to the south. It's also located adjacent to the future school site directly to the east. This will be a highly traveled road used for ingress egress to and from Fields Road and will also be a highly visible road from the future school site property. As a result, we discussed the need to properly treat the facades along this roadway as, as well as further activate the streetscape. We've been, we've implemented several improvements to achieve this objective. All of the homes adjacent to Morrison Drive are designed as key lots, requiring the facades facing the roadway to be treated with a consistent palette of materials similar to the fronts of the homes, which in this case will be a combination of brick and stone. Additionally, we are including enlarged landscaping beds to frame the side yards of these, these homes along the roadway shown in the image to the bottom right, further emphasizing and defining the road frontage. We did the same thing along the eastern boundary of the enlarged park space, which is further activated by the addition of park lighting and benches. All of these improvements create a streetscape that can be enjoyed by the residents within Neighborhood Three and also appreciated by the future school site next door, leaving a lasting impression for years to come. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant's team? Go ahead, Phil.
I, I just had one that question that was triggered by a previous application, an issue we had at a different property in Crown earlier this year. The enlarged green space for the end unit townhomes, is there any sort of covenant or restriction or anything placed on that on those lots that would prevent or in any way encumber the future owners from expanding their property, be it via an addition or something into the side yard and converting it from landscaping into built space? Is there a clear, you know, build to maximum recorded or something along those lines?
There is. There are definitive property lines that, that obviously define the individual lots and then within those property boundaries, they're building restriction lines, which
I guess, I guess that's my question is that, that buffered green space, that, that expanded green space that you showed on the screen. Is that HOA property or is that the property of whoever owns that end unit?
No, that is 100% HOA property.
Okay.
It's common, common green space.
Then where is the property line? Is it right on the building line or is it, is it a few feet out? What's the, where is the, the point that?
So it's, it's actually, the, the property lines are going to be behind the sidewalk that, that surrounds that park area. So you can kind of see how the lead walks return back towards the townhomes. But the, the property lines will be well off any of these landscape and hardscape improvements that, that we're proposing here.
I guess what I'm getting at is, so along Morrison Drive, the, the enhanced landscaping is HOA, is this is a sliver of HOA property, right? Between the streetscape and the house, you know, the townhouse, is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, so I was looking at the park space more in the expanded green area. Are you referring to where we're putting the landscaping beds adjacent?
I think, I think that's what Phil was talking about.
Along Morrison Drive where, where those end units have a, have a wider buffer where, you know, in previous areas within Crown, there have been concerns raised by neighbors about whether or not future owners are entitled to take the more generous green space on these end units and put a small bump out addition or put a, you know, you can make up a list of probably dozens of things someone could, could come up with to put there. And so I'm not opposed either way. I'm just want to make sure that there's clarity for whatever comes down the road in the future as to whether the owners of those end unit townhomes have you know, rights to do whatever they want in that space, you know, pursuant to any zoning restrictions or whether there are additional, you know, a more clearly defined restriction that, you know, you can't.
Sure. I misunderstood your question. I was looking at the, the actual park space that we expanded out towards Morrison Drive. If you're talking about the side yards where we're putting in those enhanced landscaping beds, I believe part of that falls on private property and part of that falls on common HOA property.
I'm sorry, keep a package number 86, 86. That gives you a better look.
Yeah, you're, you're, so you're talking about the area.
If you kind of zoom in to one of those lots on Morrison Drive. Go back a point, yeah. Zoom a little bit more to one of the townhouses on to Morrison Drive to your right. A little bit more.
So that's generally the area. And so the, the property line generally for the, for those in unit townhomes will fall right behind that sidewalk that parallels Morrison Drive. So the majority of that landscaping will most likely be on the private property of those homeowners. So I think what you're asking and, and, and it's a great point, we should incorporate something into either the covenants or something specific to those actual lots that prohibits the, you know, the future removal of those landscaping improvements. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure I'm advocating strongly one way or another. I'm just the, the point that was raised at other lots within Crown, namely some of the single family lots was there, there, there was a lack of specific clarity as to what was intended. So there, there was no clear prohibition, but there was no clear statement the other direction. So by default, the, the approach was it's, it's their property, they're within zoning, anybody can build whatever they want. I, I'm, I'd open it up to the rest of the commissioners to get your thoughts. I'm not sure I feel strongly one way or another. It's more just wanting to make sure that there is clarity on what is intended.
And I think we'll, we'll get to that in discussion. I think it's a great question to clarify, but we should, we should make that a point of discussion when we get to that, that point or get to that, that part of the application. Because part of that, I think also just to add on to what the question maybe or what we should probably discuss is while there may be a restriction, a covenant to keep them from building out into the space, the other part of that would be if, if part of the intent of pulling them back from the edge of the sidewalk is to enhance the landscaping and a homeowner decides not to, they just want to have grass there. They just want to, they don't really do anything with it. You know, that, that poses another, another problem kind of counter to what the intent was for, for creating the buffer to begin with. So we should, we should include that in discussion, Phil, if you would, please, just be sure. Bring that back up. Are we, are Jasmine, are we not going to look at the elevations for the Morrison side or what?
So Craftmarks, this is just for final site plan engineering. Craftmarks, when I have to come back to the planning commission at a later date for the architecture for these new lots.
So this is a member to final plan and I didn't see that there was a condition for that. Is, did I miss something?
Nope, we didn't add one, but we can add a condition.
Okay, we did it in discussion, but that's the intent, though, is to look at architecture later.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? No, okay, we, we can.
I actually have one, but Phil, Phil covered it. So thank you very much, Phil.
All right, now we're going to go to the participants and the attendees and I'm going to look for some hands that are up. And I see two and I will apologize upfront, the way this system works, I don't know who raised their hand first. So I'm just going to start at the top of the list. And the first one up is Wahida Robb. And if you can unmute yourself. Try it out. Can we hear you? Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for coming on. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm a resident at the flats at Crown, you know, the big building along De Cogly Drive.
Sure.
Two fifty and two ten. And I'm curious, I wish to know what was the original open space? You know, were there no open spaces in that corner? And is the conversion allowing open space to be enlarged or introduced? That is my first question.
Okay, go ahead and finish your questions and we'll, we'll follow up with the answers.
Okay, and I also would like to comment on transformers throughout Crown East. You know, the little transformers. I know they, they come in a color that's more muted now and blends, tends to blend in with the surroundings. But there are transformers more than one and we have one just behind our building. And there are restrictions like 10 feet in front and three feet up to the sides. And we were wondering if some tall shallow rooted plants could be placed, you know, along the, along the back and sides. And I know we have to keep 10 feet clear in the front. So in, in the front, it may or may not be possible depending upon the location.
Sure, sure.
So just to soften the transformers, because many residents complain about the look of the rigid and hard surface transformers.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I guess those are the two questions.
Okay, Jasmine, could you go ahead and address, maybe pull up one more time, the, the net change in the open space as a result of this plan?
Sure, since I don't have the.
If you go to packet page 56 Jasmine, I think that'll allow us to answer the question, at least for first question.
I think your first question is about the green space. So in the last site plan, there was green space on this side of the, the property. Actually, as you can see it here. So with this conversion, it's actually increasing the amount of green space.
Why don't you use your cursor real quick and just sort of point at where the existing is and how the new one is, the new space is a little bit larger.
Yep, so the existing space is on the left-hand pan side. Little pan. Right where you see that square, that's the previously approved park. Now with, on the right-hand side, it shows is the, the new plan that shows that the park is going to be increased in size.
Does anybody know up hand, just, just to, just to kind of give everybody a sense, is it a, is it a a net add of 100% more or 50% more or, or with the square footage ends up being before and after? Does anybody have that handy?
I know the increase is, is about 9,800 square feet is the increase. It looks like it generally doubles in size. It might not quite be double, but it's, it's close to it.
Okay, great. And would you address the point of site utilities and the opportunity to screen those and what, what the strategy is from the development side and maybe if there's something left to be done there and what's happening on this portion of the plan?
Sure, so there are certain easements that go around some of these utility and transformer boxes. I, I think you had two questions. One, you were asking if there's flexibility in the color. Those are all provided by the utility companies directly. So Pepco, for example, will come out and set the larger green type transformers and then Verizon and Comcast will come set the smaller pedestals and handholds. We generally don't have much flexibility in terms of the color that, that are provided simply because that's controlled by the, the utility companies. We have in some cases, at least where we have the space around the easements, we, we try to screen them with, like you said, shallow rooted tight plants and shrubs. A lot of that has to get pre-approved by the utility companies and most of the time, it's, there are certain easements. I mean, you, you talked about the 10 foot space that needs to be in front of the transformers so they can open and close and, and maintenance the, the transformers. But a lot of times, you know, you've got 10 to 15 to 20 foot easements around these and the utility companies absolutely will not allow plantings within their easement. Now, if there's common area around some of the easements, that's where we typically can find opportunities to, to plant that type of screening. Crown, it's a little harder just because it is a, a pretty dense and tight site. So I'm not sure exactly the, the transformer you're referring to. I know the, the Pulte condo flats, they do have one or two larger, and they are larger because those are larger buildings. They sit behind the units kind of opposite of the Cogly Drive and some of the parking medians back there. So we can certainly look and see if there's an opportunity to, to supplement some of those with plantings, but due to the site constraints, it, it has proven to be difficult in other areas. So.
Okay, so what would be the avenue for, for follow-up? Could they contact the HOA representatives or HOA folks or through the city or what, what would you recommend?
Look into the, the opportunities to plant something like that.
And just to, just to follow up to see if, you know, if they, if they want to check in on how, how it went and what was possible.
You could contact the HOA. That would be something at this point we would probably implement just as the developers. So you know, Jasmine, you're happy to pass along my, my contact information and my email to whoever needs it. And I'd be happy to set up a time to meet them out there and, and take a look to see what could be done.
Appreciate that. Good. Okay. So I think that takes care of those questions. And I don't see any other hands up. There was one, but it's disappeared. So.
Chairman Bauer, if I could add real quick, there, we have some new members that have joined us since we ran the video. So it may be worthwhile to run the video one more time.
Okay, so let's, let's do it again, Brian. We surprised him. He didn't have it queued up.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
All right, I, I'm just impressed, Brian, with how every time you do it, it's almost exactly the same. I, it's nicely done. All right, so if anybody is interested in speaking on this application, I'll give it 15 more seconds here to see if anybody is hitting the hands up button. And I don't see any so far. All right, so with that, Jasmine, why don't you go ahead and start with your recommendation? If anybody does join us, we can, we can grab them before we get to our discussion, but please, please do go ahead with the recommendation.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant AFP dash eight five zero seven dash 2020 amendment to final site plan, fight it in compliance with sections 24 dash 170 and 24 dash 172 of the city code with three conditions.
Okay, very good. All right, so Phil, let's, um, let's restart your, your, your question or get that into more of a discussion form about how the side yards are treated in the, in the, on these, these new end lots.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, it sounds like there's really two questions, I think, for us to kick around and decide where, what, how we feel. One is, you know, these are not huge additional swaths of, of green space. They're relatively modest, but I, I think they serve a decent and, and laudable purpose. So, you know, if, if a, a future property owner would want to put out, you know, a small addition or you know, a small screen porch or some sort of constructed space in the, you know, five or 10 space, five or 10 feet adjacent to their house, is that something that we would want to restrict? You know, I, I can kind of be swayed either way, but I think it's something we should take an opinion on. And then John, your point about concerns about maintenance of the landscaping are equally, equally valid. And so I think part, part of the question could easily be solved by shifting the property line at those end units to make that, that common space truly common and, and, and property the HOA. So I, open for discussion. Go either way.
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in, John, and just say, if we channeled like Mike Watson or Mike Watkins or, you know, DPZ or somebody, you know, it would be that sort of angled white fence extension, right, that you, you'll see up and down Kentlands and other places here in Saybrook. And I think you know, that, that's probably more likely than, you know, Phil's big addition, right? Just from a cost standpoint would be to put up a a fence, put a patio out there and a table, right? It's going to be almost, almost irresistible if I were that homeowner. And I figured out that's where my property line was. And of course, you know, it takes over half of that planting. So, you know, it's kind of almost wasteful, right? So I mean, at some point, either we kind of, I think we commit one way or the other to Phil's point. So either we go ahead and put, you know, a little bit of picket fence there and say, look, your building is done, but this is your property and we're going to give you a cute little you know, fence. Or we go ahead and plant it and push the property line back. So I, I think the in-between thing probably doesn't work, agreeing with Phil. And if we and if we push it back, planting is probably but there may be some real advantages there to the, to the applicant, you know, to go ahead and incorporate that, that site in there and to go ahead and sell it as a, you know, side patio or whatever, you know. So you can't have a vertical architecture, but you've got property, which is something all of us suburban barking dogs love, right? Yeah, yeah. And I think my, my hope is I just don't want it to be incidental or forgotten or. Yeah, yeah, and I think my my hope always, I just don't want it to be incidental or forgotten or or, you know, accidental or or, you know. That that it it isn't being a place, the logical place to put the extension ladder, doesn't become a logical place to leave. Um you know, whatever, that it really becomes an active side of that of the architecture. Now, part of what we'll see, I think, in the next. Submit will be the architecture for that side of the building, and that's going to be a little bit about preserving, you know, it it won't look so throw as a throwaway side yard. Type of thing, but um at this point, since since there's really an opportunity to be deliberate one way or the other. I'm with you, I could go either way, I as long as it's a deliberate and full full story to tell, you know, one and I guess I'd ask Mr. Ramsey. You right now, your site plan or your your proposed site plan pushes the property line right up to the sidewalk, so you're the implication is this all really belongs to the lot. Um in which case there'd be a little fence and there'd be something that really allowed the owner to own that space. Is that where you wanted to head? Is that what you intended or what what is your your sense of this?
So what I'd like to do, um I mean, I I agree with with all the comments. I think we need to protect whatever we. Whatever type of improvements we end up installing there, whether it's landscaping or fencing or a combination of both, I'd I'd really like to. Look at the site plans closer just to make sure, I you know, just because the property line goes out close to that sidewalk, doesn't mean the the building restriction line does. That might be tucked back in closer to um the actual townhouse, so I'd I'd like to identify that. The other, the other thought I had was we have um guidelines, architectural guidelines that are implemented. And and uh enforced by the H O A specifically in this area, it would be the neighborhood two-three H O A. Um and and one thought I had was we could um amend those guidelines to restrict. Just that, somebody expanding that, expanding the footprint of their home, whether it be a a bump out or an addition or sunroom or whatever. Um out into these areas. I feel like that would probably be the cleanest way to do it. Um just to avoid getting into a situation down the road. Anytime somebody needs to put on an addition or or add a porch or a deck or whatever, they have to apply through the H O A to do that. And the first thing we do, whether it's, you know, painting their front door or changing out a light bulb, we we refer to the guidelines to make sure it's allowed. And the H O A has the ability to enforce and either approve or deny those those types of improvements. So I think it can be controlled that way as well.
Well, the H O A guidelines, you know, we we have identified the key lots on the site plan. Um which then drives what we're expecting for the final elevations of the buildings, and that's happened throughout the whole development, as you're aware. Is there something similar in the H O A documents that would then put a little bit of uh a a minimum standard on how these side yards, which are. Keylot elevations, how they'd be treated over time with landscaping, you know, whatever whatever it might be that they. They would be under a little bit different standard than, say, the back of the house or the or, you know, the.
Oh, I think I think so. And I and I think um no, I mean, these are formal formal architectural guidelines that are adopted officially adopted by the. We could um specifically reference these lots with exhibits, you know, with the final site plan showing, you know, this. These landscaping beds, this is what they need to look like, this is what goes here, the homeowners aren't allowed to manipulate them if the bushes die or the plantings die.
Yeah, okay.
Um and then just prohibit the ability to remove them and replace them with with other types of.
Sure.
I don't even think honestly they have the ability to do that. I'd have to go back and look and just confirm where those building restriction lines are. I I I highly doubt they come out to the sidewalk.
Okay.
Um but I I just need to look into that.
And I can add some clarity to that. Um the the builder restriction line is that location, I believe, is four feet, so they do not come out all the way to the sidewalk. And I believe this, I believe the property line, I think, is about a foot off the back of the sidewalk.
Okay.
All right, I mean, I think I'm I'm looking at there there are, I I found the enlarged landscape plan that's paid one oh three of the packet. And and it does look like, I guess that's the building restriction line I'm looking at, I'm I'm.
Graphically, it would be the thinner dash line, not the thick one, yeah.
Yeah, so so the the entire balance of all that landscaping is controlled, maintained and managed by the property owner the way it's currently drawn.
Okay. So i- as long as there was an enforcement vehicle in place that it stayed important or it stayed maintained. You know, our whole our whole objective here is to is. Once the homes that were originally proposed for the Morrison side that were essentially facing the street, once those go away and this becomes a side yard. The tendency is for that to be overlooked over time. So, you know, our our, I think our priority here is that once we allow this to move forward. It has to also maintain some 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 level of quality along the street streetscape, even though it's a view of the high school or whatever. It's still, it would be something that would be important to maintain. So maybe what we could do, Jasmine, is um since we're we're gonna, I think we need to add a condition. By the way, I was going to bounce this back off you guys, but I think we need to add the condition, the architecture is coming back. And and I think with that um uh more comprehensive explanation of how to, whether it's an H O A covenant, whether it's, I don't know, whatever it is. It's it's David, you can you can decide, I mean, you might move move the property back, whatever you decide. Although I think with this, we're essentially establishing the property line for um flats, right, Jasmine?
We are.
Okay, so uh moving the property and probably isn't the most reasonable answer after tonight if if we approve the site plan. But I think uh whatever comes back with the architecture also includes what happens at the at the ground level in terms of a of a scheme for. For maintaining the quality of the streetscape over the over the future years.
I I would caution also moving the property lines, um it may create issues with the setback requirements. Um the townhouse actually may not fit anymore in the lot.
Okay, fair enough.
I think between uh between what you said and, you know, I think Jasmine and I can work together and and, you know, Greg and whoever else.
Okay.
Some sort of unfortunate.
U- u- unless you have severe objective objections, I'd like to make that a condition so that it comes back as a clean clean requirement to to take care of when we see it again. Uh commissioned, I I've sort of talked over you all, is is that reasonable or do you have anything that we want to add or?
Fine with me.
I mean, it's directly related to the facades, I I think, as a as a corner lot, key lot uh issue, so it makes perfect sense. Okay. I would uh uh and I'm sorry, uh Dan, one thought, just that it is kind of related also to this transformer idea. It's transformers kind of a stand-in for these um, you know, green vias between the between the sticks, right? That for the moment or is either going to be a muddy swamp of grass or some kind of landscape thing. Or or maybe if a, you know, property owner looks at their plat and they might figure out that they can sort of plant what they want there, uh unless the H O A restricts that. But the public utility easements tend to go right down the the, you know, center of these blocks, whether horizontal or vertical, here it's vertical. Um and the transformers sit at the at the top of those openings, right, as they as they should. And I think the rear of those transformers is a great opportunity for plantings. Uh and while it's not a key lot, it's um it's a mid-block lot. It's still a corner lot in the sense that, you know, it does have some visual um pieces to it. And I think um, you know, David, there's there's probably an opportunity there for you to do a little bit of that sales walk, dress up at those transformers. Um uh and sort of in in the same vein of what we're talking about at the other end. Um uh gives you an opportunity, I think, uh for a little bit of planting there, it'll go a long way. So um I think all those issues are related and then and I'm sorry, uh John, one more thing. And then just the end lot, the down by um lot number twenty-one, uh which is sort of the end of the Morrison Street. Uh the three trees there that sort of round that corner of the pathway, uh as it extends down from Morrison Street is are great. Uh but I think you have sort of the same issue there with a whole lot of grass, uh and grass probably doesn't do. Get any good, you know, it doesn't really sort of accomplish what you want from a driving sales walk standpoint. And and even though it's currently the tail end of the of the whole, you know, community. Uh eventually will be uh kind of the front door, probably for a lot of folks that'll be driving around looking for someplace to live. Um and or, you know, the second set of sales, but certainly even the first set of sales are going to drive past that corner. And if it is sort of, you know, a whole bunch of straw and grass, it's probably not the best sales presentation. I'm not as worried about the end of that street, but that I think that's another opportunity there for some um evergreen low-level planting.
I agree.
So Jasmine, would you um take a crack at a a fourth condition that is that that captures both the 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 building architecture, but also the site? Um the landscaping plan?
All right, uh my new assistance, because right now I have it applicant to submit the final architecture. And are you looking for H O A docs or guidance on the landscaping for the units on Morrison Drive?
I I think it's landscape plan, right?
The landscape maintenance plan.
That's fair.
Applicant to submit the final architecture and landscape maintenance plan to the planning commission prior to the issuance of the building permit?
Right. You know, or or at least the outline of the language that will be added to the H O A documents, you know, not the final language unless we can get there, that'd be great. Uh but whatever it is, it's going to sort of make this consistent for the next twenty years would be great.
Make sure it's protected.
There's enough discussion in the record. I think you know what we're after. We just need to make sure to get something on the record that that points but points at all this discussion.
Understood.
All right, uh Danny Lloyd, anything else that you'd want to jump in with on this one?
No, I'm cool. This this is good.
No, it was a good.
Like the expanded uh green space, I think it solves a lot of problems. And if uh Ruth Zali was tuning in from Puerto Rico, I think she'd be very happy.
I think you would too.
Great point. That's a good point, Lloyd. No, I actually actually like that, um you know, and it was something, I was great that. That the citizen brought that up because that's always, I mean, it's always just this, you know, those transformers and they just they just look so. And to try to do something to dress them up is always, I mean, that's a very good point, so I'm glad we're having this discussion.
All right, excellent. Um if there's no other discussion, I think what we have now is a recommended um approval from staff. And and four conditions in the record.
Right.
Um is there a motion, please?
Chairman, uh based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and sta- staff report findings and recommendations. I move that the planning commission grant AFP eight five oh seven dash twenty twenty amendment to final site plan, finding compliance. The sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with the four conditions as written to the record.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
I.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
Commissioner Windborn.
I.
And I will vote I as well. Thank you very much. All that passes unanimously. Mr. Ramsey, look forward to seeing seeing the architecture, but but good-looking plan. Thank you for the discussion tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, commissioners, up next is um a second site plan, um and I'll just warn you ahead of time, we'll 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 cut in with the uh. The um explanation about testifying in in just a in just a bit. Um next up is site plan S P eight five three nine dash twenty twenty. Um there's also an environmental uh um, I guess technically it's the forest conservation plan, E N V eight five three six twenty twenty. And site plan eight six five three dash twenty twenty, construction of a new public elementary school and associated site facilities. At four hundred Victory Farm Drive in the R A low-density residential zone. And this is preliminary plan, preliminary site plan, final forest conservation plan and final site plan courtesy review. Um and Jasmine will explain more about why um it's a courtesy review. Um when she gets into that, I think Jasmine, what I think we'll do is let's go ahead and uh oh, we're gonna. Tech team cut away there for a minute. Anyway, I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and do the presentation. And then break in with the explanation on how to do um do do uh do comments from the public, if that's okay. All right.
So I staffed it for you to present preliminary final site plan, S P dash eight five three nine dash twenty twenty. Final forest conservation plan, E N V dash eight five three six dash twenty twenty. And final site plan courtesy review, S P eight six five three dash twenty twenty, next page, please. Um so the applicant is proposing to construct a new ninety-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-eight square foot elementary school building. And associate sites facilities in Kelly Park, which is located at four hundred Victory uh Farm Drive. On June second of twenty twenty, the Maryland City Council and Montgomery County Public School System entered a land acquisition agreement. For the thing to provide a portion of Kelly Park for a new elementary school. Um so you see here, uh Kelly Park clearly includes uh ballfields, playgrounds, tennis courts. And a sand volleyball court and open space and associated parking lot. As outlined in the land acquisition agreement, the planning commission must review the final site plan as a courtesy review. As some of the applications we've done uh for other school sites. The plan commission has the authority to approve the preliminary site plan, which is the allotting diagram and the final forest conservation plan this evening. I will have Seth Adams from M C P S to start off the uh presentation.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you and good evening. Um so if we could go to uh, I believe, the the uh next side of the presentation. So so thank you, so just want to do a little introduction before I I transition over to the team. Um you know, again, you know, thank you for the opportunity to present the uh the plan. Uh this this is certainly a. A much-needed elementary school in the Gaithersburg cluster. Uh we we probably have been working with with uh families and and. Um students for for the last ten years to to find a a community-based uh school uh that will meet the needs. So this is a project, obviously, that is uh near and dear to the school system. Um the county council as well has set this as a as a huge priority. Um they've looked to um form partnerships with uh uh health and human services around like just the learning. Um and 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 again, just to provide those services for for the the surrounding neighbors and and families. So we're we're really excited to present this plan. I would say it's been a a fantastic um collaborative effort with the with city staff. And uh city mayor and council. Um and we are looking obviously to continue the uh conversations and dialogue with with surrounding neighbors. As we continue with the project. So so with that, I'll I'll transition to uh Seth Variano, who who will start the presentation. And then uh turn it over to some of our consultants to talk through some of the technical aspects. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. I'm Seth Variano. I am the M C P S project manager on this project. And I'll be uh giving you a little bit of uh background and then turn it over to Pat LeBayre, civil engineer. Uh for good, to the next slide, please. Um this slide depicts the proposed lotting diagram. Uh the existing uh Kelly Park site is both the green and the blue here. Uh which is about twenty-eight acres. Um it consists of three parcels. The school lot that we are proposing is five point seven acres. And then we we propose to consolidate the other two remaining parcels into one parcel uh that remain is Kelly Park. Next slide, please. Excuse me, this is the existing site plan. Um in blue there to the east is a stream and associated. Uh stream valley buffer and flood plain. Um the existing tot lot and basketball courts depicted here will be relocated to the west side of the site. Uh tennis courts will be um removed. Uh there are approximately ninety-four existing parking spaces. And we did uh have a traffic impact analysis performed on seven intersections. Um the analysis is part of the submission and it's concluded basically that the uh the um. Analysis performed at the proposed Kelly Park Elementary School can be considered uh. Could could be constructed without resulting in any adverse traffic impacts on the surrounding area road networks. Next slide, please. Uh this is the proposed site plan for the new school, which is depicted in orange here. We did have, as Seth mentioned, several community work sessions. Uh we presented several, I believe it was five options at first. For the orientation of the building and and the associated uh parking areas, play fields. And we landed on this, uh unanimously landed on this um this site plan for the school. It allowed vision through to the park and um also addressed the um stream, the flood plain to the to the east. Uh the bus loop is depicted right to the south of the school, uh adjacent to Belgrove Road. Um to the left of that is the car vehicular drop-off loop and parking area. Uh the proposed. Parking will be a hundred and four parking spaces with five dedicated spaces for the tot lot, which is relocated. Um those are right near the entrance of Victory Victory Farm Drive into the vehicular uh drop-off area. Uh we will be relocating a crosswalk there, uh depicted right on the corner of Victory Farm and Belgrove Road. It'll be a raised crosswalk and with um speed uh dampening measures. Uh as we work our way around the site, um there is the city of Gaithersburg Tot Lot that M C P S will be constructing. Um it's forty feet by eighty feet. It has a uh safety surfacing, rubber safety surfacing that allows water to pass through. Uh into a storm, into a drain, connected storm drain that we will be constructing. Um also to the north of that is the uh shared-use turf field. Uh M C P S, that is technically on city property. But M C P S is providing the infrastructure, constructing the uh infrastructure for that uh field. Uh to the left of it is a new sidewalk that will connect the uh path back to field one, to the baseball field. And we're also constructing an east-west. And we're also constructing an east west, east, excuse me, east west path connection that will connect us to the existing path system. Working our way around the building, we have a paved soft play area. This has two, the two relocated basketball, two relocated full court basketball courts and then just just north of the orange building, we have the kindergarten and pre K soft play area. This is all elevated up around, I believe, eight feet above. So there'll be a a small retaining wall and a gated fence above protect from falls. And I guess we'll, I'm gonna turn it over to Pat quick in case I missed anything. If you wanted to say anything about this slide, Pat. If not, we can move on. But Pat, do you have anything? Did I leave anything out?
Sure, I can add a couple things. Good evening, everybody. This is Pat LeVey with M H G, civil engineer for the project. Starting out on Victory Farm Drive, one thing to note would be if you if you recall back to this previous slide, that the entrance that lines up with Bel Grove Road here actually under existing conditions, the curb cut to the the parking lot for the park actually is offset from that. And so what we've done here is we've we've lined everything up so we have a nice intersecting street grid here. It does, it does two things. One, it provides a safer connection to the existing street aligned with an intersection like that. But two, it also allows us to pick up and be be more efficient at this intersection, pick up and add I believe it's a net net increase of four on street parking spaces where the entrance otherwise would have been today. So that's that's an improvement for the community. And then in the bus loop, that everything shown there is would be one way traffic. There is superimposed parking in the bus loop. Those are typically though reserved or used by staff and or visitors that are are there before or out outside at the bus hours to not have any conflicts with individuals interfacing with the bus loop. On the left side where we, a left side of the picture here, the left parking lot, the student drop off loop, that is one way traffic signed and marked for one way traffic as well. And I think Seth pointed out that, as you can see here, the the black line that surrounds all of this is the property line. The city of Gaithersburg tot lot, the shared use turf field, although being constructed in conjunction with this project, will will be on city parks property. The property line that continues around the site and and you can see that in in the light, light color, the path that Seth described, Seth described as running east east to west. There's the northern property line, but to the plan east, that property line roughly follows the 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 general shape, not exact, but and you will get into the buffer in a minute here, but the general idea is kind of where the buffer is back there where the flood plain exists. And as you can see from that, if you just follow that property line right now, you can see that all of the schools, the schools building and all of its hardscape elements are remain, will remain outside of the those buffer areas. The path that you do see there that is in a in a light color, yellowish color, that's actually gonna be a natural surface connection. Because we do have the hardscape path that runs through the site and around the but the first baseline of the ball field. We did wanna preserve a more direct connection to that trail system, but given given its location in the buffer area, we understand that we really can't do any disturbance down there in the buffer. So the idea is to to clear in just a natural surface walking path. And that's what you see on the screen there.
While while you have that up and and the property line is a good, a good way, a good point of reference, how much or how little or maybe not at all of of the school property is fenced in?
Actually, very little. There there will be, if you can, if you if so the areas where you you there will be fenced and it's not necessarily fenced for the sake of 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 isolating the school. It's fenced for the sake of those retaining walls. So there's on the east plan, east side of the bus loop, an arc area. There is a little retaining wall there, so there will be a fall protection fence with an ornamental style railing of forty two inches on the top. And then similarly in the back running roughly in a serpentine shape, similar to the property line in the back, there's another retaining wall that would have a fence on top of that. And outside of those two areas, the only other face place that we have fences, we do have a little bit of chain link fence that segregates the the basketball courts in those asphalt plate areas from the shared use turf field, so they don't have balls running off into the thing, but but that's really it.
Okay, and with the realignment of the Victory Farm Drive and the drive, the the curb cut for the bus lanes and Bel Grove Road, that that intersection, now that it's essentially a four way, are you working with the city to put stop signs in there? Are you assuming it's just uncontrolled and it'll get a cross crossing guard at school time? What what's the plan there?
So we do have a plan that's been reviewed by DPW staff and and it's it's final approval will be subject to further, you know, permit review. But it it does include signage and marking improvements at that intersection and along the street to make sure that whatever the changes we're making jive with every with everything. And that includes the the relocated crosswalk, the removal of the crosswalk. There's a mid block crossing, I think Seth might have pointed it out, but on the on the east side, plant east side of the property, there's a mid block crossing, which we all know is sort of an unsafe element where you're removing that. But but yes, we are working with DPW to come up with a approved signage and marking plan to complement these improvements.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are are we asking questions now? Or the are there, is there more to the presentation? I don't wanna
There is, there is some more. So we go to the next, we go to the next slide if if we could. This slide just shows the various easements that have been worked into the plan. Being that there's, there's a lot of shared activity here. The green area along the front of the property is just a public utility easement. The dark blue area that you see on the on the bottom right side is just an area to cover essentially an existing pathway that will remain that crosses a corner of the site. The other dark blue area to the left of the site is for the access road that will connect to the the park to remain in the ball field. And the the reason for the shape there is to provide additional access for a truck. If if a truck or trailer ever needed to get back there for any reason, they can either pull in or they can back in. And this gives them the opportunity to kind of pull into the school site and then and back down that road. I should have noted as well in the previous slide that the curb cut that exists on this left side of the of the site on Victory Farm will remain in its in its current place. So we're not, we're not removing that or rebuilding it or relocating it. The light blue arc is just a portion of the the field that encroaches onto the school site. Because this field has the ability, the the geometry to have both soccer and say a softball field, it has this kind of arc that that jogs out, that's just, that's just a byproduct of the limited space. But that that's an easement for the field to encroach on the school site. And then the the dark blue that extends across the back of the site covers the east west connection we talked about with the hardscape path that meets up with the existing trail system and then the the varying shaped version on the on the plan east side, on the back side is is to cover the the natural surface trail. The red easements that you see there are for utilities for storm drains specifically. The two red areas that are smaller in shapes are storm drain outfalls that are actually both existing outfalls that are being reconstructed in their in their same location. They're just being upgraded. And then the longer rectangle there is a is a trump line of storm drain that essentially drains the ball field and then connects on through the school site to the outfall location. All of these easements are subject to final tweak with the record plat, but this is a pretty good indication of how they look. Next slide. I guess I'll turn it over now to Mike Norton, our environmental consultant to discuss forest conservation.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Mike Norton, Norton Land Design. What we have in front of us is the forest conservation plan. What we can see on there is that, as Pat was saying, the limits of disturbance stays out of the Maryland Department of the Environment Wetlands, as well as the city of Gaithersburg's expanded wetlands. The way that we have dealt with forest conservation on this property is actually through planting. Aforestation, we are planting one point zero eight acres of trees on the property. Those two areas are primarily to on the plan that we're looking at on the north side of the slope where the single family homes are planted. Reinforced the evergreen edge over there for screening and took forest conservation credit for that, as well as planting on the south southwest corner, I guess, if you will of the Stream Valley Buffer to make up the planting requirements on this property. All of the air, all of the trees that are shown or the circles that are in green are the plantings that that make up the forest conservation component of this project. And I can I think that covers us on the forest conservation and I can move it back to Seth.
Okay, thank you. Seth, if you're talking, you're muted. There you go.
All right, I got it. Can we get to the next slide, please? Uh, this is some some images of the architecture. If you look at the top northwest elevation, that's the view you would see if you were standing on Victory Farm Drive and looking at the school. To the right is the three story classroom wing. And if you would look at the bottom elevation, you can see the gym on the left hand side. The gym's approximately thirty feet high and the three quarter, three story classroom wing is approximately forty eight feet high. We did have some comments about bird strikes, because this is sort of a wildlife sanctuary area in in some respects. So we did try to limit the glazing to about twenty percent of the facade. We are using a a low reflective glazing and we attempted to eliminate views through to other glazing areas of the school. Think the, one other thing would be a masonry facade with red brick and beige brick and some manufactured stone as well. Next slide, please. This is a three D view from from Victory Farm as you as you walk into the you have the bus loop there on the right and then the the car drop off loop on the left. This is sort of the arrival plaza. The front door is to the right of the flags there. There'll be some signage above above the the glazing there. This is just a kind of a how the building will feel from a from an approach, from the main approach. You go to the next slide, please. And this is our final, final view. It's a a three D, it's on Exxon view, aerial view. Just from Victory Farm Park, you can kind of see the linkage to learning there to the left, which is a right near the red car. We're gonna have signage there. It's not shown in this rendering. So that's a separate facility that will operate as a sort of a mental, mental health provider for the community. And that, I guess we could turn it back over to questions.
Okay, that's that's the end of the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'll I'll work backwards on the on the elevations. Just can you give me a brief, like, how tall are parapets? Have you worked out screening for rooftop units and all that? It doesn't look like it based on the window heads, but you probably have that already figured out.
We, yes, sir. We have, so we have a forty two inch parapet all everywhere on the on the building that has a parapet. We do that for a couple reasons. One, to screen mechanical equipment and two, to provide fall protection for our maintenance department. So there's a forty two inch high parapet around most of the building. And then I think above the gym is a sloped roof.
The you you did say, I think, that the whole building is masonry. There's no synthetic stucco, nothing, you know, no use, no that. It's all, it's all masonry.
It's all masonry. It'll be red and and a beige colored. We haven't picked the brick quite yet. It'll be a metal stud backup, so the construction should go pretty quickly for the for this. It's we're trying it. We don't do it often, but it's a quicker kind of cost effective measure to get the building up.
Yep. What is, and I you might have a policy about this that just precludes it, but what what do you guys do about operable windows? Do you have them or are they fixed stash for safety? Or what what is the policy or what is the approach?
We do provide fixed windows in all our classroom spaces. I'm sorry, operable windows in all our Not every window, but I think it's two, two thirds of them.
Okay, good. So they're not, they're not in a hermetically sealed Pringles can there?
No, they open, I believe, they have a limiting arm on there to keep kids from falling.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Now, this might be somebody else on the team, but you're talking about the traffic impact. I know that's been a concern in the community. And without getting into the actual numbers, I know you you've sort of offered reassurance that it that the impact is is not great. But just just for everybody's kind of overview, frame up how it's how it's quantified. Do you look at peak trip generation during, you know, on a rainy day when parents are bringing their kids to school? Is it an average? Average, what exactly are the parameters and how, what what do you, what did you see in the calculations?
That may be better equipped to answer this question. I do have the report here. They did use, Pat, do you want to weigh in on this question?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, they they followed, they they followed typical scoping guidelines. So the traffic engineer who's on the on the call tonight unfortunately had a scoping meeting with the city of Gaithersburg and determined a certain number of intersections to study consistent with the city's traffic study guidelines. I have not read the report in depth to see whether any of those offset intersections had any issues. But it's not brought to my knowledge that there were any.
Yeah, I think what I'm looking for is what what is it that you use to calculate trips? Not what intersections got looked at, but what what's the, what's the quantifiable I guess scenario that that generates that the 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 trips that then get plugged into the intersections?
Well, the 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 counts are based on field observed data. So they sit out there and actually count traffic during peak hours, morning and evening peak hours.
The assumptions about what the school will generate.
That's all based on I T generation rates.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, basically a manual nationally recognized manual of generation rates.
And they have a count, they have a they have a table that references elementary schools, assuming whatever, buses, no buses, cars. Okay. What I what I'm looking for is a little more solid explanation to offer the community that whatever their assumptions are, whatever their suspicions are about about traffic generation is based on this situation and not not something that's abstract or not applicable to this this particular condition.
So 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 this is Seth Adams, Director of Facilities Management for MCPS, just for the record. I I would say, you know, all of our schools and obviously there there are set guidelines for this, but what we obviously look at is the the program capacity of the schools. This is a seven forty school. Yes, seven hundred and forty students, but seven hundred and forty students, we have staffing that's associated with that. And then historically, we have sort of rule of thumb numbers for 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 busing and car riders. Obviously, the the boundary process is in is in process as we speak. You know, so you know, the final walkers versus, you know, bus riders is is yet to be determined, but there is rule of thumb that's used in terms of how a seven forty school operates within within the county. So so I know a lot of that on pretty much every one of our projects, you know, that information is is obviously provided to the traffic study engineer and they they use that information for their analysis.
Okay, so to to kind of paraphrase it, the data to or the easy for the assumptions on the number of of trips or or the the traffic flow is based on a Montgomery County Public School situation, not not an abstract table somewhere, but something that you guys have developed over time with size of the school, the decisions or the or the assumptions about how many of the students are bused versus walked. Obviously, hours of operation where that's gonna happen kind of a a different time than the typical peak treat, peak trips at a at a standard intersection in a city is more aligned with, you know, rush hour kind of condition. This is gonna be middle afternoon or something, but you have all of that is part of what your traffic study does. So if somebody looks, looks at it, they know they're looking at something that is meaningful here and not just, just kind of a generic, generic.
And that that's a great point. I think when when a lot of people think about traffic studies, they think about, you know, their experience at, you know, throughout the day or rush hour. You know, our our auto impacts are really isolated to a pretty small window, you know, in terms of when staff arrives. And then obviously, when when that short window of student drop off and pickup occurs. You know, but but yes, so I I think there's you know, again, particularly elementary schools that that operate on two different tiers. You know, again, particularly elementary schools that, that operate on two different tiers, schedules than even middle and high schools. They're typically outside of some of those rush hour windows as well. So I, I would say, you know, I, I. When people hear traffic studies and they hear the report, sometimes a little bit of confusion because it is, it's focused on, on the real data. But it is translated to what the, the true impact from a time standpoint is and as well as what the, the occupancy of the building.
I appreciate the explanation. I wanted to just make sure that anybody who was watching and had the concerns, they, they understood where, where the data, how the data was looked at and that it meant something to the neighborhood.
I did take a quick look at the, while you guys were talking, I took a quick glance at the traffic study and it, it does appear that, you know, like, like Seth said, MCPS does have. Their own pile of data they use for their schools. In the case of this study, actually, that data proved to be. Was, was lower, those volumes were lower than what you would get from the, the manual I described. So actually, the, the manual data was used as a more conservative way of studying traffic. So if you look at the report, you may see that. And it does say that all of the study intersections remained at an excessive, acceptable level of service.
Okay, very good. Thank you for following that up. All right, commissioners, any other questions? Like to fire a thing? Yeah, sure, Phil.
I had one more, more direct site plan related. And it relates to the removal of the mid-block crossing that's there now. Could you, Tech Kim, could you pull up page one sixty-three in the packet? You know, in, in general, I think it, it makes. Some of the crosswalk realignments, you know, make a little bit of sense at, at Belgro Road, trying to, trying to. Consolidate pedestrian traffic into one crosswalk instead of two. The, the, the item that has me concerned is that mid-block crossing. Where you're basically, it's basically connecting two sides of a footpath where a lot of residents walk. And my concern here is that. It's a natural path that a lot of folks in the neighborhood are used to using. So my fear is that crosswalk or not, people are going to cross there. So we, we should provide them a safe means to do so. And if that means school buses driving into the, into the area to make that right turn in the bus loop have to stop for pedestrians. That's fine. So I, I, I'd like to hear a little bit more on, on your thinking there and whether, whether the actual pedestrian traffic flow of the site was looked at before we just deleted a crosswalk.
Yeah, the, the, the crosswalk was at the, well, the mid-block crossing just generally, I think we all know, you know, there. In this particular case, it does provide a benefit because there's these two natural paths. But generally speaking, you know, mid-block crossings are frowned upon. I think we all know this because they. You know, they, they provide sort of a false, false sense of security. And, and pedestrians are, vehicles driving at thirty-five, forty miles per hour just don't expect to see somebody when there's an intersection there. And so that, really, the, the removal of that crosswalk was a determination made by City DPW. Not something the school did for the efficiency of its operations or anything like that. So if it needed to go back, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the school operation per se, at least from a site plan perspective. So that's, that was really the only reason for that crosswalk being removed. And we did, we did go back and forth with DPW on whether we. Left the ramps because there's ramps there as well, not just a crosswalk or remove them. And the ramps at one point were thought to be left in place for maintenance access, but we are removing the ramps as well. So if the, if the crosswalk, if it's determined it's okay to remove the crosswalk. We are going to take out the ramps too. So you, you would, you would at least, I mean, folks can still walk across the landscape strip and cross the street, but at least there's less of an inviting path. To cross the road there. With regards to the other crossing, the, the rationale for putting that where it is and shifting it over is to. Really align, the, the majority of folks using that crosswalk will probably be students walking to school and this would. Allow them to cross and not have to cross the bus loop. So you, you cross Victory Farm on the same side as the sidewalk that leads to the front door.
Except for all the people who are walking on the walking path, who you've now forced to walk all the way north, cross there and go all the way south if they don't want to run across the traffic. I mean, I, I get your point that, that that mid-block crossing was, the removal of that was driven by the city, but. Kind of can't have it both ways.
You, Phil, let's ask Jasmine what she knows.
Greg, but I believe we've heard concerns from the community about this mid-cross block.
Yeah, ultimately, like, like Pat stated, um, this was a request of public works, um, to remove the mid-block crosswalk. I think there has been some concerns there in the past with visibility of pedestrians trying to cross there. There is some vegetation there. I think there's some bushes as well. So there, there's some site issues that could also come into play at times. So again, the, the direction that the public works gave to the team was to remove that, that current mid-block crosswalk because again, of safety concerns. There. And then we also, again, at our direction, did want to remove basically all components of it, right? Because we agree, we understand your concern, right? We, we don't want anyone to try to, again, run across the street there. So let's try to remove any opportunity of someone thinking that's a crosswalk still.
Get ahead of that. Get ahead of that because I think, I think there's enough examples in the county of. Accidents that have happened because people have run out in the street in the middle of, of the, of the block and. You know, you might as well, we've got enough learning in that realm to, to not, not make that, make the mistake again here.
Hey, this is Danny. Um, Greg, on this, is, are there any traffic calming measures that are, are going to be? Included right here across Victory Farm?
With, with which component, I guess.
Like a hump or something like that to slow down traffic?
Yeah, I'll let Pat answer that, but there is a, obviously the relocated crosswalk is going to be a raised crosswalk.
Okay. Right, but I'm just saying even, even just to calm traffic along, you know, Victory Farm.
Isn't there already some things out there?
I'm not sure. I think it was, it wasn't there, I'm not mistaken, but I thought at some place there was a, well, yeah, there, there is a traffic circle. Right? There's way down on the other side. But I'm just talking about right there near the bus loop. And, and that, you know, the, the crosswalk.
Yeah, so the crosswalk, like Greg said, is, is a raised profile, much like what's exists today. It's, it has the speed hump.
Okay.
The, we are working, as I mentioned earlier, we are also working with DPW on a signage and marking plan to. Do some things, you know, that warning students crossing signs, the things you normally see near a school site. So we're working with them on getting additional signage and marking that would, would, would provide that.
Any other questions for the applicant before I open it up to public? Testament, anything?
Well, yeah, just one, one last thing, John. Just if, if, and this may be a question for landscape. But the, on the northernmost entry, the automotive entry, there's. I, I'm, I'll start with the, the idea of removing the street trees makes some sense to me. I see that there's some grading issues there. We're bringing the curb out so that we're probably doing a lot of damage to those. Root structures there with the sidewalk and the parking lot, but there are some areas, particularly a tree or two at the north. On, you know, automobile entry off of Victory Farm. That looked to me from where the LOD is and where the existing curb is to remain, that could remain. And I, and I wouldn't understand, I can't quite understand why we would remove those two trees, one, two trees. You know, who are now mature and at least frame that entry.
Matt, that's along the, along Victory Farm at the, at the existing curb cut that's going to remain, is that what you're referring to?
Yep.
Well, there is, there's, I guess, one thing is there is, there is going to be a new PUE through there. Not that a tree can't be in there and be subject to removal in the future, but. You know, that does potentially create a future conflict, but there's also, there is some utility work going on in there. There are.
Isn't that in the drive aisle, Pat?
Nah, there's some to the right of the drive aisle as well. There's, there's a couple of communication boxes that are relocated. The park sign that's out there is getting relocated in that area, but we can certainly take a look at that, that area and see if. Any of that stuff can remain.
Yeah, there's a nice tree on the north side of that entry and a nice tree on the south side of that entry would be, I think, a welcome framing if it's at all possible. And then I think there's, we, just Pat, to sort of finish that thought, I think there's a tree all the way at the, at the south end, you know, always all the way down towards the. Natural area. That may or may not need to come out as well. We've xed it out, but I don't, I don't see the reason on the site plan why it's xed out.
It up here. And it may, you know, it may be that. Yeah, so the one, Matt, are you referring to the one that if we go to this image on the screen here is on the, the plan lower right property corner? Essentially, yeah, that, that should be remaining. I'm looking at the demo plan. I don't see an X on it. There's one, there's one to the left of that, further up Victory Farm that's coming out, but that, that one's not.
Okay, yeah, and that one further up hits your bus loop, you're saying?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any questions before we go to the public? All right, Brian, why don't we go ahead and play, play your intro for the.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment. We can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raised hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Thanks, Brian. So I'm looking at the, we have a few from, from the public that are, that are watching tonight. They're in attendance and I see one hand going up for Deborah Wenzel. Deborah, go ahead and take your cue from the screen and soon as we can hear you, we'll, we'll get started.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Deborah Wenzel. I live in the Kentlands. I retired from MCPS three years ago, but still teach MCPS Supporting Services Adults part-time. While I do not live on the east side, I do care about the people who live there. I'm here to ask you to disapprove of the MCPS plans for the elementary school in Kelly Park. Kelly Park is the only multi-use park on the east side, which we know has a more diverse and lower income population, many of which use public transportation. It is play areas like tennis and volleyball courts that will not be replaced by the building of a new school. COVID is not going anyways, going away soon. All of us need a place to walk and play safely. The usage of Kelly Park has increased significantly during COVID because social. Distance outside is part of the CDC protocol to avoid catching the virus. Kelly Park is integral to providing this and gives all Gaithersburg residents, both adults and children, a safe place to play. Enrollments in MCPS are declining, declining. There are thirty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred fewer students this 2021 school year. Many elementary schools and middle schools in county did not meet their projected enrollments. Overcrowding could be eased by reassigning students who live in the Gaithersburg cluster. Because of declining enrollments, we may not even need the school. MCPS is actually extending the boundary analysis in the Gaithersburg cluster due to declining enrollments. I know from firsthand experience, MCPS needs money to take care of the schools. They already have to get children back to school for in-person instruction. Many schools like Rachel, Rachel Carson and mine need for her to earn the queue for expansion. MCPS should take this school construction money and repurpose it for school modifications and completing the planned expansions. As a teacher, mom and grandmother, I know that kids need green space to play and I think Kelly Park is the perfect place for them to play at on the east side. I am asking that you consider canceling the land acquisition contract or at least pausing the construction of a new school in Kelly Park. Until enrollments indicate that there's true need for a new school. The remaining Gaithersburg cluster schools have been safely outfitted with COVID-19 needed enhancements and planned expansions. MCPS agrees to complete the boundary study in advance of new construction. We don't want a school at Kelly Park if it's not needed for the Gaithersburg children in that neighborhood. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Wenzel. And, and you, you raised a good point and I, I will ask the MCPS team to address it about boundary studies and the demand. But I first want to finish up getting comments from the public and then we'll, we'll, we'll double back and, and capture all the questions and the. Questions at the end of the public testimony, if that's okay. I see a hand up from Lynn Nash. Lynn, can you hear us and can you hit your unmute button?
There, can you hear me?
Sure, can. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Lynn Nash and I live in Sabre. Kelly Park is less than two blocks away from my home. So with the recent announcements from MCPS that enrollments have declined by thirty-six hundred kids. And that no middle or, or elementary school has met projected enrollments. And as a result of this, that they're considering extending the promised Kelly Park boundary study. Which was supposed to be completed in January at the end of construct, at the beginning of construction. To November of 2021, which will be at about the sixty percent mark. I really have to wonder whether Gaithersburg even needs this school. And more importantly, why does a new school need to be in the only multi-use park on the east side? The safest place for our neighbors to be during COVID. So as to the plans, that's what you guys are all about. While MCPS said that they would not impact protected wetlands, they were initially included within the limits of disturbance. So they did. And gratefully, one of our members recognized this and we were able to interact. And we've learned that two beautiful bald cypress trees that are behind the current tot lot will be saved. But we're going to lose sixty-two other mature trees. And as Matt Hopkins pointed out, that's. Six elms, five maples and an ornamental cherry that currently line Victory Farm Drive. These trees don't impact the building or the parking, but they still want to take them down. In the city of trees, that's wrong. And they're not replacing the trees one for one. That's wrong. And they're not using native trees. That's wrong. And they're not using native plants, especially pollinators. And that's wrong too. And, you know, I'm sorry, I live here. We're going to lose overnight parking spaces. And while somebody said tonight that we're going to gain four, Jasmine said, we're going to lose at least one and maybe two. And that means that more cars will be driving into our neighborhoods and, and taking parking places from our homeowners. And finally, there are no turn lanes, no traffic light. They aren't fixing the roundabout so that it's safer for school buses. They're talking about taking out a crosswalk and MCPS has admitted, we're going to have four hundred and ninety-six new trips every day. That means people trying to drive out of the neighborhood are going to have a more difficult time. And kids trying to walk to school from the neighborhoods, hopefully, we don't know, will have a difficult time safely getting there. That's wrong too. So while you're only doing a cursory view, you need to stop. Circumstances have changed. MCPS now has the unanticipated burden of providing safety measures before students can return to in-person learning. In some instances, that means whole HVAC systems have to be replaced and classrooms need to be altered and they don't have the money to do that. So I'm asking you to stop the review. MCPS should pause the construction until we know that there is a true need for a new school. That all the schools in the existing cluster have been safely outfitted with COVID-needed enhancements. And MCPS agrees to complete the boundary study in advance of construction. We don't want a school in our park if it's not needed. And if it's not needed for Gaithersburg kids. The cluster doesn't have to support upcoming, folks that live up country. We need to encourage MCPS to use their existing budgets to make changes needed to have our students safely returned to in-person instruction. Yes, let's use Kelly Park as it was intended to be the only multi-use park on the inside, on the east side. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. You made some great points and, and we will turn to the applicant's team to address that. Before I do that, I just want to look back at the. At the screen here and see if anybody else is interested in commenting on this application. And I don't see any hands going up. I do want to get back to these questions. I'll preface it by saying, and I think. I think the testimony acknowledges that, acknowledges this and that is that the. The actual arrangements for making this a school site were the purview of the county mayor and council and that's been finalized. And I think what we're, we're mostly. You know, the, the extent of our authority and the extent of our involvement in this is to. Ensure that the quality of the plan, ensure the quality of the development that is going to happen, that is approved to happen. Is, is, is of a standard that's consistent with what we would expect in the city of Gaithersburg. But I do, I do think it, it's worthwhile that, that the points that are maybe addressed by the, by the county's team. I guess the first one would, would sort of go to the broad question of. Boundary studies and demand for the school and timing for construction. If all of that is sort of still in flux or still, still pending some resolution, not only in the short term, but maybe in the mid, mid to longer term as well. And I'm not sure, maybe Seth, you can answer that or who's best to, to jump on that.
Sure, you know, I, I think that's a, that is a great question. It's one that. We, we absolutely are going to have continued demand for, for seats in the Gaithersburg cluster. No doubt about that. What, what we've heard and in the conversations around this particular boundary study is we're not going to stop the boundary study. You know, but what we're going to do is we're going to publish the, the, the report based on the timeline, and we're just going to hit a pause from rather than making a decision this spring to wait until the fall until students return. And, and you're probably saying, well, why, why do that? And, and really, because when you look at our, our enrollment, yes, we are down, and most of that, the, the, the lower numbers are at, you know, the pre-K and the kindergarten level. You know, many families have decided not to start their students at kindergarten, have not decided, decided not to send their, their students for pre-K. But we fully anticipate, you know, those students to return. So even with that, the schools that we're, we're looking at from an overcrowding perspective are overcrowded. When we return and, you know, as, as we attempt to return, you know, from, from COVID, these schools are going to be the schools that are, that are gaining most of our attention because they are overcrowded. And I would say from a, from a demand perspective, this absolutely is a, as a significant necessity for, for the families of the Gaithersburg Cluster. So, so I would just say that. So we're not delaying a, a Boundary Study. We're essentially what we're saying is, let's make the decision in the fall when we start a new school year. And hopefully, what is a, a traditional school environment and a school approach versus make the decision this spring in a, what we're considering as an anomaly year from an enrollment.
What decision are you talking about? The decision to start construction or the decision to have a Boundary Study? What, what's the?
No, the decision to build is, is, you know, the, the project is fully funded from the county council. Again, the Board of Education is not a funding body. We're funded by the county council. The council has funded this project, and the completion date is, is September twenty twenty two. The decision to delay was the, the board's recommendation or decision on the Boundary Study, meaning the service area of the students that would attend this.
So in, in kind of the, the backwards, the backwards linkages between how, how the county works with Board of Education, the school board, and, and the funding mechanisms. There had to be a commitment to move forward in the capital improvement, the capital project, independent of the, the process that will take place to actually decide who's going to use it. But the gross numbers support the construction regardless, and the gross number has been budgeted regardless of demands from other schools for retrofits to the mechanical system, whatever other things might be up there. Those are also considered, but they're on a separate, I guess, schedule, is it the word? Is that fair?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So it, it should be clear, it may clear that logically delaying a project like this in favor of doing remediation in some other school makes some sense conceptually. For whatever reason, and, and we're, we're not, we're not going to take this apart. The funding mechanisms, the, the approval system, the approval processes, all of that separate those two things anyway. So it's not as if doing something differently at this site is going to affect what would happen in another school at this point. So I'm assuming, right? Is that, is that a fair way to paraphrase it?
Correct. So I, I, I wouldn't necessarily, you know, confuse our, our COVID action plan with that of, of building out much-needed capacity in our, in our school system. You know, we, we do have, you know, several areas of the school system that, that continue to have growth and continue to have, you know, demands for, for, for seats, and, and that is a, a priority. At the same time, we are working to do modifications to all of our buildings, you know, from a code of response plan, but that is, that is very independent from our, our long-term six-year capital improvements program.
You said that much better than I did. Thank you. Let, let's hit the, there was a, there was a question about, and so that sort of takes on the whole concept of whether or not first that the site was approved at a different level within the city and, and the agreement to go forward with deeding it to the county forest school. That's, that's really something that's essentially been done. The timing for the school itself is based on funding that came from the county council, and, and that has to be respected. And the Boundary Study really talks about who, not so much whether the demand is there, because in gross numbers, the demand is already in place. The other thing I wanted to make sure we addressed was to whatever extent there's a, obviously that you have the forestation plan, the environmental application up, but the concept that there's an opportunity here to embrace, you know, both indigenous species for some of the landscaping, the, the decision and the, and the choice of trees, maybe just comment on how that process works. And if there's still an opportunity, maybe, maybe embrace a more, a more locally driven mix to, to the landscape scheme itself.
You want me to pick this up, Seth? Okay. Mike Norton, Norton Land Design, again, for the record, we prepared the forest conservation plans for this project, working with McCree's on, they were the landscape plan preparers as well. I don't have a, hopefully, I've, I've got enough notes here written of what those last comments and concerns were. We don't technically quantify individual trees for removal in open space like what you would on like a smaller residential project. It's not subject to forest conservation. When we look at the forest conservation, we, we look at the, at the project globally. And I cannot right now confirm what Ms. Nash said about sixty two trees being removed on the wi- within the open space. I do know, I, I did go back and look at our plans real quick while, while she was speaking, and the Forest Conservation Plan does propose sixty five new trees on the site that are addressing canopy. They are addressing screening, and there are some that are ornamental trees. I, I did go back and, and review as well. And all of the trees that we are proposing on the Forest Conservation Plan are found in the, in Montgomery County and in the woodlands and open spaces of this area. So I'm not aware of any that are not native. I may be mistaken on that, but I, I'm pretty confident in what we have shown. I reviewed the landscape plan as well, while, while she was speaking, and there are a total of eighty three new trees being planted on the site. Again, above the sixty five as, as, as what we're proposing for A four station credit. Forty four of those trees are shade trees, and thirty nine of those trees are ornamental and evergreen trees. What we have to be careful of, and when we're looking at Montgomery County Public Schools and safety of the kids, stormwater, stormwater management facilities with E S D requirements and surface stormwater facilities, they are integrated into the sites along walking areas, around ball fields, things like that. So schools does try to be careful of selection of plant material from the perspective of although we all love the pollinators, the, the idea of bee stings, things like that from kids that are allergic and, and stormwater facilities around these areas, we tried to limit the, some of that to some extent and use as many ornamental grasses, things like that as possible. So that's where we are on landscape. I, I think that I got the comments. If there's others, please let me know.
Okay, yeah, I think you've addressed the comments. I, I had notes about. In the last question, and I'm not sure who can, who can field this, but trip generation or actual traffic studies aside, there was a question about whether the roundabouts were designed in a way that accommodated school buses appropriately. And I saw Rob, I saw your, your head popped up. I don't know if you were getting ready to help with some of this or not, but maybe the staff can, can at least address that. I'm, I'm going to assume that they are because they were, they were built for anything to drive through, just, just to quiet down the traffic, but any vehicle legal on our street should be able to pass through. But maybe somebody from staff can, can comment on that.
I, I believe going back, and actually I popped on, you know, in case Mike, was there more questions about the forest con or landscaping? But I'm happy to sort of to take this. I believe, and I cannot remember, but the study, the city had funded a study to review all the roundabouts within the city of Gaithersburg, and I think one of the first ones was the one on Victory Farm. So there may have been a study, this was at the same time, as Commissioner Kaufman may remember, you know, they were looking at Kentland Boulevard too. So it was, there was a comprehensive look at all the traffic circles within the city. We as staff can obviously follow up with that, you know, with, with D P W to see where that city left, or, or are there any valid concerns? But this one, I thought, had a, you know, a, a good-sized angle of deflection for it. It's not, you know, it's not like a little trap. I mean, it is, you know, sort of substantive, so, but we can follow up with.
Yeah. I mean, Rob, nobody knows these places better than the people that live there. So if, if you would check into it and see if there's any, anything to be concerned about or something that might need to be taken care of.
You, I can tell you, I lived there, and my kids drove the bus around that circle for several years, so I can.
All right. Well, I think we've captured.
I'd have the bus. I shouldn't put it that way. They were on.
Child labor laws. You have very talented daughters. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it past. So the, the question or the notes I had from, from the public, I think we've, we've addressed in which would really take us to the recommendation from staff, unless Commissioner, do you have any other questions?
John, I believe there was also some questions about the recreational facilities that are being eliminated and what that means for the community. I'd like to ask the M C P S access to the recreational facilities and replacement of recreational facilities, as well as will the current facilities be cut off for the year and a half that there's construction going on? Or will the community still have access to some of the ball fields as well as other facilities that may be available?
Good question.
And, and, and they are great questions, and I can certainly defer to the team on some of those specifics. But, but yes, we intend to maintain access to those fields during construction. I would also say from a, from a recreational perspective, you know, we, we work very hard with, with city staff around, you know, what is that, what does that rectangular field, but also softball field look like, as, as well as working through preferential opportunities for the city to take advantage of the, of the gym space. Obviously, that is not there now. So I think from a recreational standpoint, we, we work very hard with the city to make sure you know, anything that's lost is, is offset. You know, the one thing that is lost that is not being replaced are, are those tennis courts. You know, but we're, we're hopeful that, you know, the gym space, the, the hopeful artificial turf surface and, you know, playground, enhanced playground surfaces and, and spaces will hopefully offset some of that loss. But, you know, we, we have worked very hard to, to figure out ways to make sure that this is, you know, a true asset to the surrounding community from, from a recreational standpoint, but.
And has the community been surveyed as far as what they would like to see as far as facilities, recreational facilities? Granted, you're, you're losing a valuable pit, as I understand. You're losing tennis courts. Have there been, has there been a communication between the community, M C P S, and the city to replace or to substitute certain facilities that they may want in place of? Is that going on? Are you aware that, Seth?
I, I'm not aware of a, of a survey. You know, I think from, from, from our perspective, it was looking at it as, as an opportunity to expand activities, expand, you know, functions. I think when you, you talk about, you know, particularly there's a, a strong push for artificial turf surfaces, and, and they afford lots of opportunities even after rainy events and those sorts of things. That is why they, they have become, you know, a bit, bit of a preference. But I'm not aware of, of a survey per se, other than I know the Recreation Department for the city was really, really pushing hard to make sure that the opportunities for the city were, were expanded, both from building access to, you know, what we were designing on, on, on the site as well. But I'm not aware of a survey.
Well, we could add, Lloyd, I think Jasmine could probably add that there were some public meetings where, you know, different suggestions were thrown out, the, the neighborhood was able to give feedback, and there was a couple of those meetings. But let Jasmine.
I believe it was last year, two thousand eighteen, M C P S did have a couple of community meetings where they provided different building ladder options, and that was an opportunity for the community to comment on those, on those options. After that meeting, the site plan that you presented, that, that was the final design that was chosen for.
Thank you.
There've been conversations with the community for a year.
And I would think Jasmine, too, that was also might well have been a direct result of some of the, the parking rec master plan work that was done in the community as well. So they, they were probably coinciding a little bit at the time. All right. Commissioners, any other questions or concerns?
It's a, a question I neglected to, I actually thought I asked it, but I don't think I did. The, the stormwater outlet that's sort of comes off the end of the bus loop sort of empties into that grass field that slows down to the stream, obviously. It sits right in that, that buffer for our new A four station, little mini forest. And, you know, that, that whole sort of intersection seems to me like something that's just going to be trouble, depending on the flow that comes off of that bus loop. As it comes into deposited on that, on that green field, I, I'm sure it will create some issues. Obviously, I'm not interested in extending the pipe and, you know, across that field, but, you know, what do we think is going to happen there? Just become a giant mud pit that's a hundred feet long, or is it something better?
Well, we, we, we did look at, at relocating that outfall further towards the road where there's more of a channelized area. The problem is that in order to make that work, we ended up having to extend the outfall so far into the floodplain that you have quite an impact in the floodplain. So we ended up leaving it where it is. We have had discussions with M D because we are getting a, a, a permit to reconstruct the other existing outfall that's in, in their jurisdictional area. And we have had discussions with them about potentially armoring some of that existing outfall area further down to mitigate any erosion concerns, swampy concerns, that, that kind of thing. So we're still working through that during the permit process.
Okay. I mean, there is the option too, to run it along the south side of the building, right? And, and at least get it under the sidewalk and then deposit it. You know, within the, within the protected zone, just like the other outlet, but at least it'd be closer to the stream and closer to vegetation that, that water, right? So I, I don't have an answer. What I'm saying is that in the, on the plan, it's simply a diagram that says, you know, here's a whole bunch of water opening into our grass field, and we need to make extra special care that it doesn't become a swamp there.
Right.
And along with that goes the sort of pulling all that A four station as close to the setback line as possible in order to keep that open area available for passive use, right? Even though it's in the wetland area, it's still a very well-used area. Great for sort of small pickup soccer games and whatnot, frisbee and whatnot. It's a great little space. We don't want, we want the trees. We want them to be as local as possible because there is quite a bit of good natural area and a big, you know, insect population along here. So we do want to encourage them. If you're going to have trees, I get it. You don't want one in the middle of the parking lot that's attracting bees. But in the A four station area seems perfect. So that, that whole sort of area needs to be thought about a little bit more than, let's dump the water and, and spot the trees there, right?
Well, and, and, and Pat, could you just, could you describe a little bit about the stormwater management approach here? I, I know there's an existing outfall, but I think it's important to, to recognize, you know, how we're treating it compared to what it is today. You know, through E S D and through other, other you know, measures. If you could just maybe just describe the difference between what is there today versus what will ultimately be there when, when the school is constructed from a stormwater management perspective.
Sure. Yeah. So under existing conditions, really, there's no stormwater management. I'm using finger quotes. Everything that happens out there today is just water into a pipe and a pipe outfalls. So as everybody's familiar with, you know, Maryland and the city of Gaithersburg has very strict stormwater management laws for development. So we do have a number of environmental site design facilities, bioretention facilities going in. And then there is actually an additional component that's being put in an underground vault, actually two underground vaults systems. So just upstream, if you will, of this outfall location that Matt and I were discussing, there's actually an underground vault system that will provide some additional attenuation. So in the average annual storms, you know, a lot of this water is going to be contained. It's just the larger, you know, much larger storm events where that outfall really sort of function in the way that we're discussing.
Yeah, I'm seeing that on sheet C four oh one. It looks like you have a lot of vault capacity, but that's what's happening, right? It's collecting there off of the paved areas and then, and then discharging into this outfall. So you, you don't have the full rush of storm, you know, middle of storm rush, right? I guess is how this will play out.
Yeah, those vaults will fill up before that outfall starts. I mean, there'll be a trickle because those, as those vaults fill up, there's cartridges that filter water, and there's sort of a trickle, but. Yeah.
Well, only storm rushes where we'll get water, so.
Yeah.
But still, I think, you know, we need to sort of, I, I just want a little care to be paid and make sure that it doesn't become a problem. And then it kind of goes along with where the trees are planted and how they're planted. Uh, and then it kind of goes along with where the trees are planted and how they're planted, uh, in order to maintain that open space. So I don't want it to be muddy and want it to be open. That's all. It's a good passive space and it should be kept that way.
Good point. Good point. Alright, any other, uh, questions or concerns we should bring up for, before Jasmine does the formal recommendation? Alright, um, Jasmine, you want to go ahead and, uh, tell us how we're going to wrap this up?
So it's going to be, um, three separate motions, one for the plaring, uh, site plan, one for the final forest conservation and the others for the final site plan courtesy review. I'll go ahead and the first one. So the first one is staff recommends the planning commission. Based on exhibits submitted, applicant's testimony and staff report findings and recommendation grant. S P dash eight five three nine dash twenty twenty preliminary site plan found in conformance with sections twenty four. Twenty four dash one seventy and twenty four dash one seventy one of the city's, uh, zoning ordinance. Next motion is, uh, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted. Applicants' testimony and staff report findings and recommendation. Grant E N V dash eight five three six dash twenty twenty final forest conservation plan funded in conformance with chapter twenty two. Of the city code. And the last one is, and I do want to know, um, uh, staff does want to add a third condition, um, related to the natural path that's shown on the site plan.
Okay, good.
There is a note that, uh, the applicant is going to have to work with the city on the final location. Um, and materials, but staff wants to add that as a third condition.
Okay.
So staff recommends that the planning commission conduct courtesy review of final site plan S P dash eight six five three dash twenty twenty. And based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony and staff report findings and recommendation recommend approval. Final site plan with the following conditions finding, uh, or with three conditions finding, uh, formats with section twenty four, uh, dash one seven, uh, twenty four dash one seventy of the city zoning ordinance.
Okay. So let me ask you, I heard, I think, three points. I want to make sure we, either, either the record takes care of it or there's something about the motion that can take care of it. The first was, um, Matt's concerned with the actual planting, the plan for the, the reforestation, A four station. Um, respect a little bit about the open space on the, um, uh, southwest, the southwest corner of the site. Um, which is more of a planning issue than it is an A four station plan issue, but, um, to the extent that that would affect the site plan package, I want to make sure we, we capture that. The second item was the discussions about abandoning the mid-block crosswalk. And whatever needs to happen so as not to encourage it anyway. So whether there's an existing path that already kind of points you in that direction or. You know, a clearing in the trees, what, whatever the natural tendencies are for, for folks who want to cross there. That not only are they removed, but they're in fact deflected somehow, or, or, you know, it, it's made harder because. Because clearly there's going to be some activity around this site that's going to be more intense than it has been. Um, once the school is open and operating. And so we don't want to, we don't want an ad hoc kind of resurgence of that, that pathway and that cross, mid-block crosswalk. O- only to be a very unsafe situation. So I, I don't know how to, how to phrase that more clearly in terms of the project itself, but I want to make sure we don't lose track of that.
This is probably a question, John, uh, uh, talking to Rob, probably, I'm guessing, Robert Gregg. Um, you know, that crosswalk is probably partly my fault, right? From a decade or more ago. Uh, but it's also, uh, you know, it was came in with the rain garden came in, right? So it's right in the middle of a rain garden. So it has, you know, um, good planting on either side. And if you remove the ramp and, and continue the rain garden planting, I'm sure it's a substantial barrier, at least visual.
Great point.
Raise any sort of, um, any sort of sidewalk connection to that and, um, maybe even, you know, put a couple shrubs there or something just to even continue the discouragement. Maybe you can hide it enough that people will simply go to either end of the rain garden and cross there. I, uh, uh, the reason it's in there, the reason it came about was because kids were simply crossing there. It, it, it was always. The, the sidewalk didn't connect on the, on the east side. Uh, it only, it only connected on the west side. Uh, and, um, but kids made the path, right? There was a deer path essentially came off the path and. And all the kids went up there, uh, including myself and my dog. And I, I'm not a kid, but make that walk too. So it's, it's a really great, uh, path. Once you get to the west side, I mean, it's nice on, it's nice on the Kelly Park side as well. But on, on the other side, it's a really beautiful natural path that goes back to that pond and all that kind of stuff. And it's, uh, it's well-used now. And I, you know, we as a city ought to be trying to figure out a thousand different ways to make it more used. It's a great asset. Um, it's a, you know, well-designed, it's nice and fat, it's great, it's bike, uh, hiker biker width. So I, I'm, I'm kind of torn here. I, I do see the, the struggle and have for the last decade and a half or whatever it's been. Uh, of kids sort of peeking their head out around the, the tall bushes that are on either side of the rain garden. Uh, and cars stopping or not stopping. Uh, and, uh, it's certainly a risk, but I don't know that removing it removes the risk. Though, uh, I, I get the, I get the feeling of comfort that just because there's a stripe there and a sign, you, you step right out into the street, uh, in full confidence. But, and I don't have a solution past that, but if we take it out, um, we want it to be a very, very deliberate decision, I think.
Right.
And, and at the very least, we ought to be prepared to put it back, should there be additional problems. So somewhere in there, the city's got to sort of take responsibility for the triple check on this and the ability to come back and fix something. Should this solution become a bigger problem than it, than the current conditions? That's my speech.
And, and can that be the case, um, city staff, I'll just turn to you for that. I mean, the, the idea that w- we wouldn't necessarily encumber the site plan with a condition that deals with this, but. As soon as the city can step in and correct or, or, or not correct, but, but could address any issues that arise because things are going to change. And there's going to be a whole different pattern of use and, you know, expectations of people on the site coming on and off the site. Who knows what will happen? I mean, it may be that nobody uses the path anymore because they think they can't, I don't know. But, or it gets used a lot more. We have to really think hard about how to, how to interact with the street at that point. But it, it's all kind of theoretical at this point. So I, I assume that's something the city could take responsibility for. Without us necessarily trying to layer on some other issue to be designed into this site plan. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes, if we're going to go forward with, you know, approaching D P W about the, uh, roundabout study. Obviously we can, you know, voice the commission's concerns a- about this and they can explore other options through the city C I P process potentially. Um, I think one of the earlier commissioners, you know, mentioned something, is it as simple as a, a different type of traffic calming or something, you know, just to make people aware? And then once we get, you know, pavement marking and signage, I, I think there's a lot of opportunities for D P W. Again, their whole issue was mid-blocks typically, you know, encouraged and in this particular situation. Um, especially given the changing context of land use, you know, it could potentially create conflicts.
Yeah, I, I think the only, the only reason to include it as part of this. Site plan, and I don't necessarily mean our approvals, but in the design process as it moves forward. Is if the solution is actually better off to adjust some of the path locations, especially on the school site side, so that they don't align up. Um, don't know if that's the right answer or not, but. Uh, that, that would be the only context where it would be worth looping that into the site design because you're going to be rebuilding that whole side anyway.
And that you won't know for sure until the place is built and it's been, been there for a year and people start to walk through there and, and like Matt called it a deer trail starts to emerge, you know, potentially. Yeah. Um, okay. So I think I covered the loose ends. Commissioners, anything else you want to, um, add to the?
I, uh, I'll, uh, it's my neighborhood. So I'll, I'll add that, uh, we've been working on this for a decade and, uh, uh, feels like three or four. Uh, uh, there's quite a bit of the community that does not agree with this development. And there's quite a bit of the community that is so excited to see this investment in, uh, in, uh, this side of the city. Uh, and I think that M C P S, after all this time, actually came out with a great plan. Uh, it's the plan that we preferred, uh, hopefully not coincidentally. Uh, those of us who were at some of those meetings, uh, I think it's, uh, just really well done and I'm excited to, to walk the dog around this.
Well, I think the other thing to be, to be really thankful for is that, that it's been a long process too, to work. With the county on a school model that isn't the old nineteen seventies sprawling one-story, one and a half story thing. But something that is, does have a little more of an urban footprint and, and respects preservation of the site. And we have some great now case studies in the city and, and in and around the city. And this, this just falls in line with, with, but I think. We're all learning from that, which is it's not, it's not a bad model. It's a good way to, a, a good and appropriate way to use the land and, and fit into a neighborhood. And so, um, I think it's come out really well. And, and I don't think you had anybody here on the team tonight from Small and Ember, you, they, you were just sort of representing them, but. You can, you can certainly forward. They, they've done a nice job with the architecture too, the quality of the materials and, and, and the work they did there.
I'll let them know. Definitely. They'll, they'll love to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if I could add to, J- John, I really appreciate what you said and Matt, but the, the fact that you're actually building it. In a usable size. I mean, many, many times they've built something and then they've had to add a, you know, an addition a couple of years later. But this looks like it's going to be right-sized for use when it opens. So, so I'm really happy to see that.
Well, it better be. There's no place for port, for portables.
Exactly.
You cannot have the turf field. Alright, um, so any other concerns? Are we covered? I think on, on the discussion, the record kind of takes care of Jasmine. These sort of follow-up concerns with, with pathways and crosswalks and outfall and tree, tree plantings.
That's correct. So you don't want to add that as a condition? That's more just staff to continue your work?
Not necessarily. I'm just asking if, if the record discussion takes care of that for any final review from. Public works when they review the crosswalk issues and I, uh, are we, we're not really looking at a landscape plan tonight. It's really just A four station. But it's a courtesy review on the, on the landscape. So we don't have any real. Uh, th- there's no real jurisdiction to say a formal condition on that, but I think my point is there's enough in the record for the. County team and staff to work through maybe some subtle shifts to that to make sure that, that, that there's a good, um, a good open space preservation and, and some relationship to the outfall on the, on the south, southwest corner.
Yep.
If you all just nod, that'll take care of it, I think. Okay. Alright, um, if, if there aren't any other, um, comments or questions or, um, issues to deal with, I think, um. A- as an umbrella statement, yeah, fantastic project. So, so to the, to the county team, nice work. Thank you so much for working with the city over all these months. I know. Um, you paid your dues with both staff and with the council and, and, and I think we were really, um, enjoying the benefits of all that hard work, if only just a little bit of work on our part. So thank you very much for all that. Um, first up is the, um, recommendation that we, um, approved the preliminary site plan. Um, if anybody wants to know why we have that and a courtesy review on the final site, but I've been told that we have to do that formally. Um, to set the stage for, um, the record plat, which will reestablish boundary lines. Um, for the city property versus the county property, which, which obviously isn't, isn't configured that way now. So. We do need a formal approval on the, on the preliminary plan to establish, um, establish the, um, constraints for the, for the plat. So that's what the first motion is. Um, and is, is there a motion please?
Alright, Mr. Chair, based on the exhibits submitted, applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations. I move that we grant S P eight five three nine dash two zero two zero preliminary site plans. Finding in conformance with sections twenty four dash one seventy and twenty four dash one seventy one of the city's zoning ordinance.
Second. So moved and seconded and, uh, Commissioner Wesel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And, and I will vote aye as well. So that passes unanimously. Um, and then next up would be the motion to approve the forest conservation plan.
Okay. Um, based on the exhibits submitted, applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations. I move that we grant E N V dash eight five three six dash twenty twenty. Final forest conservation finding it in conformance with chapter twenty two of the city code.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Uh, Commissioner Wesel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. And finally, um, is a, um. Interestingly enough, I'll, I'll clarify something here, Jasmine. Your staff recommendation says that the staff recommends the planning commission conduct a courtesy review.
Yeah.
So we've done that. So what is the motion actually then?
I don't think you need a motion. Uh, we've obviously conducted the courtesy review and, um, the record clearly states, um, what comments you have. So I think we will be okay on that.
Okay.
So the three conditions are, will automatically go to the staff?
Yes, we will, we will, um, forward the conditions on to the, the M C P S team. Um, and we will continue to work with them on the plan.
Good. Alright, great. So I think with that, we've done the formal approvals, the courtesy review, um, good conversation with the county team. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Um, good luck. We're looking forward to seeing the project move forward. I know Matt more than anybody since it's right in your own backyard. Um, this is, this is a, an interesting project for you. Thank you all. Um, have a good evening and we'll, we appreciate all the work you've done on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so that takes us now to from the commission, um, and I'll just work around the grid here, I guess. Lloyd, anything tonight?
I just want to mention to everybody that, uh, the leave gathering is back in process and that the city is gathering up the leaves at the curb. Please do not block the storm drains with your leaves. Don't shove the leaves down your storm drains. Just leave them at the curb and the city will take care of it.
Good point, yeah. Uh, Matt, anything tonight? No? Okay. I could tell what you said even though you're muted. Uh, Phil, anything tonight?
Nope, nothing for me.
Danny, anything tonight?
Of course.
Okay.
Just a reminder that the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association's thirty-seventh annual conference will be this coming Monday, November ninth. It's from nine AM to four PM. I urge you all to join us. You don't have to stay the whole time. You can jump on and jump off. But remember, um, that Kirk E B is, is presenting, um, you know, a really interesting topic, you know. Planning in a pandemic and that kind of thing. So he'll have a great discussion there. And of course, um, our own Frank Johnson will be doing, um, his, his annual presentation on, um.
Excellent.
There he is. So I'm, I'm happy that they'll be there and I hope that you all can join us at least for a portion of the, um, conference.
I plan to, although I haven't registered yet. I assume I can still register.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Please do, please do.
Sounds good. Alright, thanks to all commissioners. Um, so from the staff, um, Greg or John, who wants to jump in first?
Um, I can go first. I have a couple of dates to remind the commission of. Um, there's a joint public hearing on a text amendment for about permitted uses in the commercial unemployment zones. Um, that's scheduled for November sixteenth. Um, and we have a joint work session on the Lake Forest Mall. Um, and that's going to be Monday, December fourteenth. Um, and then just a reminder, the next planning commission meeting is going to be Wednesday, November eighteenth. And I plan to hopefully have at that meeting the upcoming twenty twenty-one planning commission calendar for your review.
Wow, okay.
Okay, wow, yeah.
We are already. That was fast.
Yeah.
And that's all I have tonight. In some ways not so fast, right? Great, thanks Greg. Uh, John, how are you tonight?
I am great. John, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So good evening, planning commission. Um, I just wanted to, uh, announce that we are wrapping up on the Lake Forest Mall public outreach. Um, we have the final three events are tomorrow. Uh, three public forums from ten to twelve, two to four and six thirty to eight thirty. Um, we have had eighteen focus groups meetings so far. You've had thirty-three hundred and forty-three responses to the online survey, according to Laura Mafud this evening. Um, and we've had about six hundred paper surveys returned from the seven thousand we sent out and that's just so far. Um, big kudos to, uh, Rob Robinson, Kirk E B, Laura Mafud, as well as, uh, huge support from Tom and Sharon. And, um, British group, um, the P I A group has been amazing for us. And, uh, so, um, a- as Greg mentioned, we are off, we are focused on the December fourteenth joint work session. Where we will download everything we've gotten and, uh, look for direction from both the planning commission and the mayor and council on, um, you know, how we should draft. Um, the master plan text amendment. The, the other thing I wanted to mention is that next Monday, in lieu of a work session, the mayor and council are going to conduct a council on the communities meeting. Um, at seven o'clock, not seven thirty, seven o'clock on, uh, Monday, uh, November ninth. And, um, the entire city is welcome to join us. Um, you know, usually we split it up. We have six different, um, sectors, but. This time it's the entire city. Uh, haven't done it in a year, so it should be an interesting meeting. And, you know, if you want to tune in, find out what's going on in the city, um, there are, I think, six different departments that are going to presenting. Um, should be fairly brief, um, but, you know, we're welcoming a lot of, uh, public discussion. So. That's Monday night.
Thank you. Let me take you back to Lake Forest. As you probably know, I know you know, um, the local, their local media has, um, shown that. The owner of the mall posted a plan for the mall, um, somewhere on the property. I don't know. Um, would you just, for us, put that in context? Has it been formally submitted to the city? Is it, you know, where, where does that fall within the, the larger picture here of the work that's going on?
No, it has not been formally submitted. And in fact, I mean, you have to understand that that plan was put together by one of the five owners of Lake Forest Mall. It was put together by the owner of the core. They do not own the four anchors. Um, you know, we went through a year-long process, um, giving them time to, uh, acquire those anchors, and that has still not happened.
Okay.
So we are now in a moratorium. Nothing can be filed. Um, from August of twenty twenty till August of twenty twenty-one, we anticipate having the master plan, um, uh, map amendment done by August of next year, so.
So it's probably just a P R thing. It's not really a serious submittal at this point.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. All right. Um, anybody have anything else they want to jump in with? Okay. Well, if not, thank you all for your work tonight. Um, great productive evening. And, uh, have a good night. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.